The November I'm saying, the March 9th of 2015, Meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the budgling agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
Mrs. Mello.
Councilor Sousa.
Present.
Councilor Perry.
Present.
Councilor Mello.
Present.
Councilor Lambert.
Present.
Councilor Dimodiris.
Present.
Councilor Shabbat.
Present.
Councilor Pelletier.
Yes ma'am.
All present.
Consent agenda, approval of executive session, special meeting minutes, December 11th, 2014, approval of special town council meeting minutes, January 24th, 2015, approval of regular town council meeting minutes, February 9th, 2015, approval of special town council meeting minutes, February 14th, 2015, approval of special town council minutes, February 17th, 2015, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions, the zoning board of review two, conservation commission, border canvases two, historical cemetery commission four, Fogland Beach Oversight Committee, and the Prevention Coalition Committee. Correspondence received and filed, Middletown Town Council Resolution, opposing House Bill H. 5257, discover Newport, February 2015 minute meeting, City of Newport, invitation to annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, September, I'm sorry, Saturday, March 14th, 2015, approval of tax assessor abatements, five, John Peglini Esquire requests staff review of article seven, section four and five of Tiverton zoning code referred to solicitor, town administrator requests by Matthew J. Ray Rhode Island's State Director, smart power for permission to hang a solarized Tiverton banner on town property for two weeks at the seaside gas station on Main Road and waive the building officials permit fee. Recreation Committee, authorization to advertise for summer employment, Tiverton Conservation Committee, proposed Code of Ordinance amendments, zoning article seven, sign, excuse me, signed regulation referred to planning board, town administrator, police and fire department overtime report for February, town administrator distribution of February monthly department reports, Kate Michaud, February administrative officer report. Any of the councils would like to remove consent agenda?
I would like to remove CA 5 and CA 8.
I would like to remove CA 3A, please. CA 8, persistent?
Yes. Identifying motion two, approving us to the consent agenda?
Same move, second.
Motion being second, all those in favor, unanimous. CA 3A, Middletown Town Council Resolution, opposing bill H. 5257. Mr. Pelletier?
Yes, I'm not sure where we are on this, I don't think we would have discussed it at the meeting that I missed, but this is something I think we probably ought to talk about our next meeting and potentially also draft a similar resolution. This bill relates to, well, it's, I'll just read the heading, it's relating to waters and navigation, harbors and harbor lines. I don't know a ton about it, Paul knows quite what we need, favor, that the state is proposing, people in the state are proposing to create a fee structure at the state level for moorings that would be prohibitively, I don't know, it seems like an awful lot of fuss and money for only a few communities that actually have moorings, and I think the people who've proposed the legislation are, are not of those communities, so we should take a look at this, and it would really impact mooring fees in the town of Tiverton. I want to say it was something to the effect of about $200 per mooring that they would be required to pay to the state, and the money would go directly to D E M.
Would you like to refer this to the Harbor Commission and get an opinion from them to see what they feel?
That's fine.
And when we put it on the next, well, I don't know when their next meeting is. When is your next meeting, Bruce?
February 6th, first Monday.
So we could put it for the following Monday is our meeting. What do you think?
It's a month away. With all due respect to the Harbor Commission, I don't, I'm not sure that we need a heck of a lot of convincing, this is a bad idea.
I know, I know.
The Harbor Commission did not have it on its agenda, so we didn't take any action on it, but members of the Harbor Commission have independently contacted Jay Edwards and other reps to suggest that this is the West Bay Dry Land trying to sort of a Sycamore River Bridge approach of funding the state, and indeed, part of the way it's phrased, it almost implies that it would usurp our mooring fees, which would be a double detriment. So, you know, we've been contacting our contacts within the government, and if this, you want to put it on your agenda for next two weeks from now, there's, you know, suggesting in opposition to it, certainly I can tell you that the Harbor Commission would concur with that.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is request Nancy that this be on our next agenda, I can rewrite this to more appropriately reflect Tiverton, and also maybe just put a copy of the House bill in there, and then we can vote it one way or the other. So I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion, and second, and all those in favor?
Just one second.
Oh, go ahead.
Just the bill mentioned, if anybody would want to see if you go to Secretary of State's under Representative Trello, he was one of the sponsors, and I listened to it a little bit, and he was talking about a police force on the water at Navigated Bay, so, to fund that, so, I agree with Brett, it's, it's just a money grab.
Thanks, Joe. Any further, any further discussion? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
I'm also going to move that we accept this, rising correspondence to receive and file.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor? CA 5.
I just wanted to make, when you said to refer it to the solicitor, I think we should weigh into the new solicitor, has been picked, whether it's Mr. Tights or someone else before this gets reviewed.
And the reason for that, Peter, you just?
Because I believe we should have our new attorney review this instead of, again, if Mr. Tights is going to be our new attorney, our attorney, then I have no problem with him reviewing, but until then, I think this should be on hold until the new attorney gets informed.
Wouldn't it go to the attorney that handles planning zoning, land use?
I would imagine, we'd go to the zoning attorney.
Yeah, and that's where I think we're getting ready to?
Well, at this point, we don't have, at this point, we're going to discuss this later, but we don't have a zoning attorney, and Mr. Tights has been taking, taking his place at certain things, so. So the motion is to refer this to the new zoning attorney?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Opposed? A motion to accept CA 5 of the consent agenda?
No motion, accept CA 5?
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? CA 8.
Just to note that when this was written by the Conservation Committee, they had an error, misspelled it should be section 12 instead of 7, and I can even have to have a corrected draft of this.
Nancy. There's a correction in there.
There's a correction after 10 minutes.
Okay.
I think I'd like to point something out, if you look at the second page on the background, says there are six gasoline retail stations in Tiverton, each has a legal non-conforming sign, and it just struck me odd that every gas station in town has a non-conforming sign.
Yep.
And even Hess is, Hess is what, 15 years old, I remember they had to come to zoning to get the sign they have, they had to get the special use, I believe it was, so I just wanted to point that out, found it kind of odd that, you know, I mean, you look at those signs, I mean, they look like every other sign, I think I made the point.
Any further discussion? Okay, a motion to accept CA 8 with the correction.
One second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
No, I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
I'm opposed. I'm protesting.
Why did you do it short? I'm, I'm fine.
That's right.
All right, public hearing and public presentation, public presentation, Scott Humphrey, presentation on economic development committee, welcome.
Thank you for having me, and a very belated congratulations for all of you on your election, I want to point out that I've been trying to get in front of you all for several months now for one reason or the other, it's nice for the night. The intent of tonight's gathering with you all is just to sort of give you an idea of what the EDC is up to, I am hoping, and this does go back a little bit, that you all have a program of work that was issued by the EDC, if you don't have copies, I'll get copies to you tomorrow. Our book of work is generally an outline of what the EDC is up to on behalf of Tiverton, our goal is simply to promote, facilitate business development in accordance with the comprehensive plan, some of the larger components of the body of work that we've got is to develop and implement strategies to retain existing businesses, expand existing commercial base with complementary businesses, identify potential commercial assets within their development, stabilize residential tax rate to an increase of commercial tax, promote Tiverton's quality of life aspects, identify federal and state assistance programs, and to establish a communication strategy within towns and boards, commissions for the public. What the EDC does is we reach out to about seven boards and commissions every month, and we send an EDC representative to go to those meetings so that we can hear firsthand what's on the agenda, more importantly, to hear the tone, it's one thing to sit back and read minutes after the fact, it's another thing to be in front of these folks, listening to really where the passion is, and really what they're saying, that minutes have a tendency to not include. In conjunction to the program of work, I can't emphasize enough the importance of the town of Tiverton's relationship with the Newport County Chamber of Commerce, that organization is a small business, built and recognized corporation, where they seek out and listen to members' concerns within the business community that directly impact not only their businesses, but the community that they're in. Based on that, last spring, two of your existing council members had, I'm sorry, one existing and one no longer with you, approached the EDC, would be want to put together a similar organization, only smaller, a micro organization here in Tiverton. At some point when the war, when the weather was warm, I think it was June, we had a nice get together with, I think about 100 folks, not only from the town council, other town committees and boards, but also businesses alike, the idea was to get businesses sort of galvanize and start talking about building our own business collaborative here in Tiverton. The idea was quite simple, to bring the groups together around one table to voice our own concerns, what we could do for the town, what was impeding that effort, and bring one single voice to the town council. The board was made up of four business folks, and we had an attorney representing us. Frankly, we dissolved the organization soon after it began, it was dissolved just before the end of 2014, and it wasn't for a lack of enthusiasm, it was a lack of time, business owners are busy, it's not a 24, I mean, it's not a nine to seven job, or a nine to five job, and we just didn't have the ability to move it forward. The EDC at that point sat down and started discussing the idea of putting this group together only slowly, so the EDC wanted to take parts of the business plan from the Tiverton Collaborative and start introducing it to businesses here in town. We've taken it a step further, the EDC has identified three areas of town which largely house most of our commerce here, that's the, sort of Four Corners, West Corners, and the North Main Corridor. Our intent throughout the balance of this fiscal year and into next is to start reaching out to these business groups and bringing them together separately. In time, we hope to take those three groups and bring them together into a cohesive business collaborative here in town. I don't think there's any question that the EDC is really here to not only help businesses in town, but to help offset property tax levies here in town. And frankly, the only way we can do that, and what we're charged with, is to bring additional commerce in the town. We've identified several areas within the town that we see as potential economic development areas, we affectionately call them assets. That includes the Business Park, Mount Hope, Tiverton Crossings, Four Corners, North Main Road, Riverside Drive, as far as west and west Four Corners. Of course, villages on Mount Hope is privately held, Tiverton Crossing is privately held, that doesn't change the conversation, it only, I think, says that these areas we feel are prime for some sort of commercial development. This is all in the backdrop that in 2013, our residential property were assessed at $1.645 billion, and it was bringing in a just shy of $32 million. That compared to our commercial property, which was assessed at a mere $210 million, bringing in a mere $4,000. I am convinced, and the EDC is going to be working towards figuring out what exactly that means in the next 10 or 20 years if we stay on this trajectory. My gut feeling says that we're going to be in trouble unless we increase commercial tax base here in Tiverton. That will probably be coming up, quite honestly, in the fiscal year 15, 16, but we're already sitting down and taking a look at what data we need from the tax assessors in the town of Tiverton in order to illustrate that to the town council. That, folks, in a nutshell, is what we have going on, there is a lot of work behind a program of work that you'll have in front of you tomorrow, on assets, and if you have any questions on what we're doing, what we intend to do, any questions, concerns, that you reach out to the EDC and simply ask us. Once again, we have very little power here in the town of Tiverton, what we are here to do is to start a conversation, and leave the heavy lifting to you all, that's what we do, so we've got the easy end of it. Do you have any questions for the EDC tonight?
I just, I couldn't, I know Mr. Cottrell is on the Rewrite Committee for the Comprehensive Plan, I notice he's been attending those meetings, but I think that is an area that the EDC really, I think, needs to pay attention to.
Use your mouth, Joe.
Thank you, I thought I was speaking louder than I thought I was, but I just encourage that the EDC pay a lot of attention to this because, I'm just talking about, I mean, it seems to me it's ridiculous that every gas station in town has a non-conforming sign, and I know they're talking about the section, because you look at like the Guadalupe, they're not big signs, but I guess the, where the numbers are, the numbers are bigger than the town would make it to be, or the powers that be at the time voted them, so this next plan is going to make a difference whether or not Tiverton is able to have more commercial or be more rated.
And so the EDC has been invited onto the CPAC, the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, we're working through that process now, the EDC will be presenting a small portion of that on Thursday, it'll be vetted by the committee itself, and I think polished, and then I understand that it goes to the planning board and then to the council, so we are looking at it, any other interests would be looking at, their segment of the Comprehensive Plan Review?
I was particularly interested in land use where it comes, particularly, if you look what's going on up at Fish Road, I mean, we've actually seen some development along there in the last decade or so, you know, boat building, street buildings, building Coast Guard cutters and things, and many different businesses that actually moved into Tiverton.
That's right.
From Swansea and other areas, so, that area, I think, needs to be, you know, make sure that the regulations in that area won't become any stricter than they are, because it's, I think we've already got the strictest in town.
And I think, Councilman, I didn't mean to cut you off, I think that goes hand in hand with what we're trying to do, with getting businesses together so that those businesses can, can talk to the EDC, and if they have those similar complaints, then we can bring that right to the proper people here in the government.
I just got a couple comments, you talked before about, you know, people don't have enough time to attend these meetings, I belong to the community for the business in Florida, and I know they get, it's a, it's a larger town, we have a lot more businesses in my town, and we get together once a month, I'd like to see that happen in Tiverton, and if I could help, you know, I'd gladly, but not once a month, maybe every now and then. I think more deals are made over a drink, a dog glass, than sitting across a table, and we just learn from each other, just, you know, maybe, they're always sponsored by a certain, or it might be a bank, would sponsor it one month, somebody else would sponsor it another month, they'd have a certain location, it might be just coffee, doesn't have to be drinks.
Well, thank you for your support, Council, and I think that that's, that's exactly what we're trying to, to do, is to have it even quarterly to start off, you know, and see how that, how it forms, we see, the EDC sees the importance of this group that's going to be formed, I would only think that would be beneficial, obviously, I'm a large fan of sitting down with, with all groups, to hear what they have to say, I certainly get educated by it, our EDC gets educated by it, and I think it's a, it's a good path forward, understanding everybody's problems and see if we can come together. The Four Corners group has already started their little area, mostly concentrating on marketing, and I assure you, we see the success in what they've done down there under Christine Silveira's leadership.
Any other discussion?
Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for all the work you've done and dedicated to this. DPDW Director Steven Burris, Public Input Hearing for our live Rhode Island Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Small MS 4, 2014, brought to quiet by Rhode Island D E M.
Thank you, Madam President, good evening, everyone, this is Israeli work done for us, as a requirement of D E M, really through the federal V P A program, Stormwater II, where every year we have to report and update law information to D E M on an annual basis. Three main things that differ from this report from last year's is that we reported they formed the Sewer District, and last year we were, all of the sewer and, on site was, you know, Harbor Town, we added about 100 catch basins, we're pretty close to 1,500 now because of Cottrell Farms and William Barton, and now we're only able to clean one half of our catch basins because our catch basin cleaner and street sweeper has been broken down since, I would say, mid-August. We've gone through that with the Budget Committee meeting and the problems we had with that, and, so those are the three major changes from last year, and everything else is fill in the blanks and pretty repetitive, but I brought Matt Leglue here from E S S, he's a stormwater consultant that works on this report, it's due tomorrow, isn't it?
That's correct.
Tomorrow, we obviously need one day, one day ahead of time, but it's not complicated, it's really just an update, I know a few of you haven't seen it before, and most of you have, but if there's any questions on them, I'm not sure to answer the technical part, and I think we had to answer the general, I guess.
Any questions from the council?
Just overall comment, it seems like 2014 was a pretty quiet year for illicit discharges and complaints and investigations and?
But pretty much, I mean, we still have five D Ls in town, we have Robert Gray Area, Stafford Pond, Sucker Brook, Mount Hope Bay, and, and this Sycamore River, that's been one of it, so, there's five areas in which D E M has notified us, and has T D Ls on, so, nothing's changed, we haven't conferred any more than that, but we're doing one of it for those five, and reporting for next round.
Anything else?
This is going to be open public meeting, we have to make public input and add that I thought, this was so, let me check up.
Public hearing, open hearing.
Public hearing, right.
Okay. Like to open it to the public for discussion? Like to open, open it to the public? Like to open it to the public? Public hearing, um, public hearing is closed, any further discussion? Thank you, do we have to vote?
Yeah, I need to vote to, to forward this, yeah, accept it, as this is a draft, and to accept that it'll be a final, and it'll get it out tomorrow.
Entertaining motion?
Move that we accept and forward the R I P D E S, Rhode Island Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Small MS 4, 2014 Annual Report, as drafted.
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Advertise Public Hearing, Alcoholic Villages, Town Code of Monuments, Chapter 6, Proposed Amendment to Authorize and Make Rate, I Need BYOB License to Serve Alcohol, Brought In By Patrons, Also Known as BYOB, Continued from February 23rd meeting.
Thank you, Madam President, and you to the council, this is third time, fourth time we've seen it, or the first one, but further changes, we're basically accepted all the changes up to date, and the further changes are indicated in red, which includes Page 4, Section 5-58, we kind of were clarifying as to what that purpose was, about why the establishment, if it's going to be a Victorian establishment, what the purpose is in having a number of the containers so that they can be concerned with underage drinkers and keep not doing it for intoxicated people, you come in and you're already drunk, even if you're If you come in and you're already drunk, even if you're bringing your own wine or beer with you, you're not going to be, able to be served in a program. And then the other change was towards the end on Page 6, going into Page 7, where we've provided, we do aspects so that if someone, these are the ones that are not victorian establishments, but if it's someone like Sandy Woods, which is doing it on a regular basis all year round, they can indicate that, they're year-round licensed, and someone who's just looking for a long-term license, they can indicate that as well. And then finally, we added another section at the end, a catch-all on the fees and fines that would be set to, the licenses set to the fees and the advertising costs that would be set for the town. I don't expect it would be quite as ominous as the liquor license fees, but the fines, limitations, revocation, suspensions, or so forth, if there's any violation, those would be the same as the state procedures. So, any other questions?
First of all, the only town that's going to have this, correct?
No, the town of Johnston has it already, town of Bristol is looking at it.
The other question is the liability. So if you're going to Sandy Woods, and you're going to have 350 people, and I'll go around over the place, 350 people, and there's a park there, I'm assuming that they're going to need police patrol to monitor the traffic, or...
Well, I think that's, that's the point of having this ordinance. They're going to, right now, it's happening, it's just happening. They're going to have to come before you and ask for a license. And if you think that they should have a police detail, you're going to make that as part of your motion, or amended the motion, that, to grant that license condition on them providing a, a detail as you think fit.
Wouldn't that be the event license, though, that would require events with a certain number of people, aren't you required already?
Uh, not automatically, no. If you have a certain size, if you have a certain small enough event, you don't come to the council, the clerk can just issue it. Then when you get above 100 people, you end up coming to the council, and it's really up to the council to decide on a case-by-case basis, because it's the difference between, you know, a rock concert that's going to draw a young crowd on a Saturday night and a folk concert on a Sunday afternoon.
So the council has discretion, I don't know.
Yes.
So my question, again, for the liability, so if we pass this ordinance, and something happens, who's liable? So would it be the organization itself?
It would be the organization, yes, as it is now. We're not changing that.
The rules are what happens. So you're going to have open 350 people, and who's going to monitor the alcohol on that property? I know he said tipsters are going to do it, correct?
Right, well, what this requires is that you have at least one person, because, you know, some of them are going to...
I could rather listen to 300 people.
Okay, and that's, that's why I think you would have conditions if you're going to be having a big event, as opposed to, but we're saying it's one. Even if you're going to have 10 people, we want there to be one person there who has the tips training, who is our identified license holder. So if there is a problem, we know who to contact.
But a tipster... Again, I don't have any problem, I just need to get this clarified. A tipster monitors your drinks, they want your drinks and service, so how could a tipster...
Not in this situation, they're not, no. It's just that someone who has the tips training, it's so that there's a trained individual who's presumably going to be wandering around and looking for problems. If there is a problem, that they'll be able to deal with it.
Again, I have any problems, I just want to make sure that we're protecting the public for a drunk driver. So monitors, how is anyone going to get caught when they go into this place?
You don't.
He doesn't, so...
You don't have to adopt this. I mean, you can, you can, I mean, I wouldn't, you can leave it as is, or you can go to the next best available alcoholic beverages.
Yeah, can I just make, am I, now, this is my assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are currently doing nothing to protect the public in this regard, because these events could take place without any requirements, without any license, without any required supervision. Is that correct?
Well, it is now.
That's what I just said.
To some extent, there is an entertainment license involved, but it's on private property, and they don't have a victorian license, they're not selling food, so they're not selling the alcoholic beverages, so that's correct. We don't regulate it now.
So like the four corners they have, they have bring your own picnic, is this the same way it's going to work?
That's correct. I mean, and if you wanted to, you could go the other way. You could, you could require, as part, if you're going to give them an entertainment license, that they, that, the quid pro quo is, even if they're on private property, that there be no alcoholic beverages at all. If that's what you want, you can do it. I mean, that would be the other way to protect the public.
This happened all that summer, right down at the Kornet Village.
It's been happening for 15 years.
They have Friday night, Sunday night.
I'm just asking.
If somebody comes to us and it's a larger event, the normal with 500 people estimated coming, then we can set our own separate rules to that event, is that correct?
Absolutely, that's the point. The point is to just, to be able to have a look at it, so that you can make that decision of, you know, gee, this looks like it's going to need some police detail.
Or just like singing out against hunger, we have them have a police detail because of the traffic down on there.
That's correct.
So it would be the same thing.
Exactly.
So, Andy, I got a question for you. Kornet Village does this on Friday nights. Do you bring your own booze, bring your own picnic? Are they going to have to come before us now, before they can do it?
That's what we have to do.
That's the thing. It is nice, Tommy. It would be a positive, I'm sorry.
If it were, then you'd give it a yes. Yes, they would.
It's, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay.
So would this apply to someone having a wedding in their backyard, and they have to get an entertainment license because they have music? Would that apply to them? They could have 150 people, would it apply to them if they had 50 people? Would this apply to them?
That sounds usually criminal, moves, wedding night.
But it's also, it's an open to the public thing. If it's not open to the public, then that's a different story. We're talking about, they would have to get the...
On private property?
It's on private property, but it's not open to the public. You can't just, nobody, you can't just go and say, gee, I'd like to go attend that wedding.
Right, it's just invited guests, so that would be a different...
So I, I would think it would only, they would be under the entertainment license part with the noise and so forth, if they're going to have a very large wedding.
How'd that happen?
And they have to do a music, but they wouldn't have the requirement here. If they were not, if they were having a BYOB wedding, no, they would not have to get the BYOB license, only the entertainment part. Because keyed on the fact that it's a...
Someone was having a clam boil in their backyard, and they sell, it's a fundraiser, and they're selling tickets, then it would apply to them, because they're not providing any liquor, and people can bring their own beer, and it's open to the public.
It's open to the public. That's, that's really...
That's the key, right? At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. For any comments? This is a public hearing.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you bear with me, I have my chemo today, I'm a little jumpy. But looking over this ordinance again, because I've been dwelling on it and trying to make sure that the town is protected and it's health, safety, and welfare position. There's been a little change to beat this up, as the listeners have mentioned, a couple two powder bears. And some of the things that we knew, we know from this public hearing is that no public, no drinking on public property is allowed, so we've got that established. But I think we should have to keep an eye on recreation areas for adult events such as baseball games. You might find some liquor. I see beer cans there already. Please? Special softball. Baseball players don't do that. Well, anyway, we should keep an eye on that for that danger. And I think we mentioned that there's no need for a BYOB license for a public non-victorial establishment, but our entertainment, so that person, again, I'm talking about a fundraiser that could be on, at a church, or a place that doesn't sell food and doesn't have a license, and they're raising money, but there's no entertainment. That establishment or that group doesn't need to get one, because it's not mentioned in this, you know, ordinance.
They're open to the public. All right.
So there's a loophole.
So what are they doing there, if they're not serving food?
Well, they're being navigated. They're not selling food, which is the first part of this license.
The decaturer who's serving would have to have...
Not necessarily. You could have a situation where they wouldn't have triggered any required licenses. And I think you're right, it's a loophole. I'm not sure I would categorize it as a loophole, but it's exclusion. I wouldn't suggest it's a loophole.
Well, it's not argue with that point, because I'm on the point of the law.
All right.
And then, looking at it overall, I think your number system is out of order, especially on the public events. You've got double numbers. If you agree with that, you can change that automatically. Starting off with, I have my computer today.
Page six.
76, 77, 78, 77, 78.
You just have to correct those?
Yeah, it's just a correction, no big deal. And so I would like to offer this amendment, if you want to consider it. So I think the new section would be 680, 681, we corrected those numbers, and that's associated with, which is, you mark there as 79, the applicant list, which is number one.
And the conditions for...
Conditions of issuance. I would like to make this, offer this amendment for your consideration and discussion. Instead of applicant, it should be directed to licensee, must provide, I'm going to state it now, stop and probably explain a few things. Instead of applicant, be licensee, must provide proof of adequate measures as to the appropriate number of individuals who are currently certified, currently certified. Your law doesn't state that that person is actively holding that certificate. He could have this certificate 10 years ago and not be updated, but he did, does have, he has taken the course. So you must, so that, it must be active and current. Training program as defined by Rhode Island GEO 376 and Rhode Island Department of Business Regulations, Commercial License Regulation 8, which is the same as you have there. Then the next sentence would be, the licensee is responsible for supervising the certified alcohol service of the consumption of alcohol beverages at the public event. All violations of the intent of this ordinance must be immediately reported to the local law enforcement. And then further change all the applicants, the word applicant, to licensee, because that's the person that should be responsible for it. And then supervising the certified service should be, not the certifier should be supervising, it should be the responsibility of the licensee. So if you have any questions on that, please. I'm concerned about third-party lawsuits brought onto the town and this council. You get a shock lawyer out there at this incident where there is a fatal accident, and it can be proved that the alcohol was sort of at one of these events, and yet this town did not provide sufficient protection for the public, you might find yourself in court. So I wish we could say that, if you have any questions, I'll discuss it, and I'll sit in my seat, and then you can...
I have a couple, I have a couple clarifying questions and comments. I think, I think I followed along as best I could. The active and current, I think, is a reasonable thing. I think what we have to be, we have to understand is, I think we run into a little bit of a problem if we require someone to be certified before they become an applicant, because if that's the case, we really need to make sure people know that they have to be certified before they can even apply. So maybe we, we can craft some lines to fix that. But I think we're going to run into a problem, I mean, this may just be semantics, but you can't, you can't be a licensee before you've even applied for the license, you're an applicant, and that's not just a legal thing, but it's reasonable to assume that that, maybe just the first instance, and then you change it otherwise, but you can't be a licensee as an applicant, you haven't gotten the license yet.
I mean, licensee is a person that has a license.
I, I know, but it's, this is the conditions for application and issuance, not, you've got to be an applicant before you can be a licensee.
Well, you don't mention it in all the sections of it, the first section, but you mentioned it here as an applicant. You got, what, I was aware of that.
I like to make my own decisions, I'm fairly competent.
I'm competent, so...
Well, I don't disagree, but I just...
Because if you've got an applicant, the danger here is an applicant like in Sandy Woods, what's his name, Mr.?
Russman.
Russman, he will apply for this license as an applicant, because he's not the owner. Now, does there any problems for him or any other location? Who do we fall upon? We're going to go after the owners of a business liquor store. If there's a violation of a liquor problem at a bar, you go after the owner. The server might be responsible, too, but it's the owner's responsibility. You're going to have somebody solid ground that you can commit punishment, a due punishment for a violation of this law. An applicant could take off.
No, I think what we're, what I'm saying is, it's not this applicant is applying for the license.
Yes, he can apply for the license.
Then he becomes...
Then he's the licensee, so he should be responsible.
That, we're, we're saying the same thing, man.
All right, so, well, Brett is, you're not saying the same thing, though. Brett thinks we should keep the applicant on there, because that person is not the licensee until he gets the license.
That's, okay, that's fine. He can apply for, an applicant can apply for licensee, but the responsibility falls on the licensee.
Those two, once, once this is issued, those two people are the same.
Are the same person.
And they need to be duly authorized by the organization that they represent. In this case, I think, if you're talking about Sandy Woods, there's a board of directors that represents a nonprofit.
But they're not the owner. It's the community housing developer.
Okay, if you're going to have every, every organization that has a parent corporation come in and apply for a license for a BYOB, I mean, where do we draw the line for who is going to hold this license? Do you understand what I mean? If you've got 10 chains of command, you're going to have the president of the company holding a license for BYOB?
Is he the owner of the property? They sue law, they sue corporate presidents.
I think that's the point of this language here. We have nonprofits and so forth, and it's amorphous sometimes, and we have a church holding it, and it's a board or something, or we have the land trust, and that's, and I'm not really worried about the liability, because whatever we do is better than what's there now, which is nothing. So, you know, if we take reasonable actions to provide more control, I'm not at all worried about the liability here. And I think that is exactly our goal, to have some individual that we can hold responsible, that we can call forth and, and deal with if there's a problem, both that they have to come to us for the license ahead of time, and tell us what's going to go on, and then you can apply conditions such as details if you want, and if there's a problem, there's a person to deal with, if it's an ongoing license to revoke it, or show cause, or fine, and make sure it doesn't happen again, that you have an individual who's responsible, particularly because the very nature of this is these amorphous boards, and otherwise nobody says they're responsible, and at the, at the risk of touching a powder keg, it's kind of like the same thing about the shooting range. We get a shooting range that's a nonprofit entity, a, you know, a nonprofit group, you wanted to make sure, and I wanted to make sure when lighting more license stuff, that, okay, there's someone who's responsible, who's responsible, and in that case, it was And in that case, it was the board and we asked them to designate. Who's the one person that we have to contact? Who's that responsible party so that we've got someone to get to? That's really what we're trying to do here. We're not doing a fail-safe to make sure that, you know, every single bottle of beer throughout the town ever opened is going to have someone standing over their shoulder with tips training. We're just trying to take it a little bit better from where it is now to provide some control. And it's not a problem yet, but we want to make sure it doesn't become a problem. And this way, there's a responsible individual that we can have if something comes up.
True, it's not a problem now because there's no situation that can be covered. But as you know, human nature, things happen. This past week, two reports by the police department, DUIs, DUIs in this town. This past weekend was a fatality for a DUI problem. Things will happen. I don't want it to happen, but if it does happen, we should protect this town. Now, in your first statement here in this section six, seven, nine, which you put, which you haven't changed, is certified, the individual is responsible for supervising this consumption. Again, my amendment, beef is, beef, I'm getting dried out here.
Okay.
Beef it up a little bit, it says appropriate number of certified service will be available at an event. Appropriate number. That shows a little bit more bite into the law and protection to the town.
But I don't understand what appropriate would mean.
Say, now, we're talking about, if it's like a hundred people, maybe one certified person's sufficient. If you're going to go to a folk festival for a thousand people, you're saying here it's going to only be one.
Right.
So appropriate number could be, maybe four, five, or six.
When they come in front of us and they tell us there's a thousand, then we could tell them, could like four.
Right, that's good too. But that's going under the entertainment license, not the BYOB.
No, the BYOB.
Then I have a section under application where the license permit, where you say, to say how many people might be showing up there?
Yes, yes.
You can't have the BYOB license without the entertainment license.
Right, and that's why we want them to come to the council. And if, if for some reason they haven't said how many people or whatnot. But no, there will be a thing on the paper, on the application that says how many people.
Okay, that's good.
And so the council, so that...
That we're moving ahead. Good.
I'd always intended that, that that's...
Well, we haven't seen that document, so we don't know.
There isn't a document. It's supposed to function similarly to the way we function. The similar process to the way we function the other alcohol beverages.
They're going to go for a license, so that is a document.
Right. And the license will have whatever conditions the council approves.
Right.
If the council says we want to have five tips, there have to be five people who are currently actively certified as tips at this event and at least three detail officers, two on traffic and one roaming the property. If that's what it says, then that's what...
We do it now when people come in front of us.
You look at it and you make a judgment about how it is.
The police chief's recommendation on how he feels. If he feels there should be a detail, then it's all part of our decision.
And it should be, and following this certify again, the point of this certified person should have a comment and an active license.
Well, what I was just going to suggest, that we could, that we could change the language, that there will be an individual at the public entertainment event who has a current certified, certified alcoholic, alcohol server training program certificate.
Right, good. And then the last point now.
Now, I have no problem changing that. Does anybody have a, just a pro current?
And having a certified individual be responsible, I've been employed. Good luck.
Chief.
Madam President, the BYOB ordinance was proposed to, so there wouldn't be, there would not be restaurants opening up that could not get a license and then subsequently bringing in alcohol. Have no rules, no regulations, no serving hours. There are host laws currently on the books in Rhode Island to actually address most of these issues that were sending the smaller events and others' situation. I think this was applicable and not, we're taking a lot of context and we're spreading it too thin.
Well, right, and this question came up because we found out that there was, there was people that like Sandy Woods, that had their BYOB. So we wanted a, a section where it was mentioned.
Okay.
And that's how, right, but it was originally for restaurants.
I understand, the council has the ability to intercept or reject a license depending on what the license is going to be for. And then of course, if there is a problem there, the following year, there will be a law. If you're going through that type of situation. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the public? Anything else from the public? I'd like to close the public hearing. Councilors, do you have anything to add?
No.
I don't entertain a motion then.
Well, I will, can we craft this language here for, for section six dash seventy-nine? What is the current section six dash seventy-nine? I will try. Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, that's fine.
The, the section which is labeled six dash seventy-nine, but would actually be six eighty-one when we corrected the numbers, titled conditions for issuance. Subsection one, second line, replace, has completed A with the words holds a currently active. So has completed A would replace with holds a currently active. And at the end of that, where it talks about program, add the word certificate after the word program at the end of that line. And then you can just say so moved.
So moved.
And also correct the numbers.
And the numbers will be ranked, yes, I think we can.
Do I have a second?
Did you get that?
Second.
Discussion.
My only comment is I will be voting against this. Ordinance only from the standpoint of it was originally intended for bringing in model situations for restaurants. And I think it's gone over to overkill with public entertainment and all that Milwaukee. So I will be voting against this.
Any other discussion?
Mr. DeRae, I agree with Ms. Shabbat.
Motions remain second, all those in favor? Against? Four, three. Motion passes.
I move that we approve the ordinance, chapter six amendments to regulate a new BYOB license to serve alcohol brought in by patrons, also a new BYOB. Let's see. Doesn't have a number or anything. Chapter six and chapter seventy-four, is that right? Or just chapter six? As drafted and amended.
Second.
Motion remain second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Four, three, motion passes. Appointment and resignation. Town representative, representative to CRMC, Bruce Cox, Harbor Commission Chair.
Madam President, Bruce Cox for the Harbor Commission. It's frustrating to hear CRMC thinks we don't have a representative. This arose a few years back and we said, let's have the chair be it. And indeed, a representative at that time is somebody who long since either left the committee and was not involved anymore. And I suggest that it corresponds to the CRMC state as a standing directive to them that whenever the chair of the Harbor Commission might be at the moment, is in fact your contact point. Because that's, that way, you know, you're not going, there's somebody else already. I'm not going to be there.
I hate to be a killjoy, but I actually looked this up because I was curious about it. And it's in the statutes, it's forty-six dash twenty-three dash twenty point one, subsection E. And in the middle of the paragraph, the city or town council of each coastal community shall at the beginning of its term of office, appoint a resident of that city or town to serve as an alternate member of the aforementioned subcommittee, should there be no existing member of the Coastal Resources Management Council from that city or town available to serve on the subcommittee. So although, as much as it might be, a lot easier if we could just make it the chairperson of the Harbor Commission, I think it's something that we need to put on our radar as one of those every December or January things to do.
Every two years.
Every two years, yes.
And in the meantime, send this letter saying...
This is our appointment for this term.
And obviously as guidance, just look to the Harbor Chair all the time.
Yours helps. Thank you. Thanks, Bruce. Do you need that as a motion?
I don't entertain a motion.
I move that we both appoint Bruce Cox to the position as alternate. Is it alternate?
Yeah. It's about the same.
Town representative to CRMC and draft a letter to CRMC indicating such and also indicating that it is our intention that the chair of the Harbor Commission be the de facto's member.
Second.
Discussion. Motion remain second, all those in favor?
Just one question. Do they also need an alternate subcommittee member?
No. Easy with the alternate.
It's when CRMC...
If Tiverton had a member on the CRMC, when they have a contested hearing, they form a subcommittee to hold the hearings. And if Tiverton had a member on that subcommittee, then it wouldn't come into power. If there's no member of Tiverton on the subcommittee, so they're on the council and therefore no member from Tiverton on the subcommittee, that's when that alternate comes in. Because when they have the contested hearing, there's supposed to be at least one member from the community.
I'm just thinking ahead and saying, okay, what happens if they, in this case, Bruce Cox has a conflict of interest and can't sit on the board at that point in time and we would not have, we would not have a representative because there's no alternate?
You'd have to, you'd have to, you'd have to appoint someone at that time presumably.
Okay. By the way, these agendas come in constantly. We post them, I believe we put them in a packet and we send them to, have been sending them to Mr. Cox for years now.
Financial business, town administration requests transfer funds to cover snowstorms. Just detached toll rates, seventy-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Mr. DeRae.
Madam President, this is a partial coverage of the amount of money spent in this slowest and coldest winter in meteorological recorded history for our area. And at the moment, the transfers are internal to the Department of Public Works. The survey news from the director is that we're not out of woods yet. And we have what could be at least another seventy-two thousand dollars to come up with in order to cover his bills. And for that reason, the treasurer and I sat down and identified all the accounts that we may have to go to to cover these expenses. And while we've taken other actions in the town in order to keep our fiscal house in order. So I'll let Mr. Beruchy go into the details of this. That's your overview. But at the moment, the accounts that are being drawn upon to satisfy storms are a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars overspent. And we're going to get halfway there tonight, and halfway there next in two weeks.
And, and, well, some of that is based that our shed is empty now and if we have another event, we have to get materials in. So we're continuing to get materials in because I even heard on the news that another vortex is coming in another two weeks. So we're possibly looking at more snowstorms. Our original budget for snow and ice, including overtime, hired equipment, and rental of, rental of, you know, snowplows we have runs around two hundred thousand dollars a year. Right at this particular point, we're about a hundred and ten thousand over. And I anticipate, like Matt said, probably another thirty before we're done. I scoured my DPW budget to see how much was left. And all those transfers from the left from drainage, paving, the community center, line painting is going to go. And there was funding left for maintenance workers. That was because we didn't fill the maintenance filling position immediately after it was available and the part-time summer help wasn't filled. So there's, those, the funds out of maintenance workers, that's where they became available from. So this is going to leave me with ten thousand dollars left in the rest of the year for patching. And our roads, as they've been recovered, are horrible. I hope that lasts. Leaves me around seventy-seven hundred dollars in drainage. I'd use that kind of as insurance in case we run on patching money and maybe in the last month when the weather turns, do the drainage if we have to. The community center is available because we closed it. Line, line painting, we never got to do any, so we won't be doing any this fiscal year. And that total comes out to seventy-two thousand dollars out of the DPW budget. And we've already, and it's also been covering the rental of the backhoe that we long to unleash a while back. So these are two really big hits to the department that weren't really planned for. So we're going to be operating on a real shot budget. Hopefully we keep our guys busy and hopefully we won't get any more snow. But with this transfer here, we're probably about forty thousand dollars more shot in cash and I anticipate more money being spent for materials if we have another snowstorm. So we could be looking at that seventy-two thousand dollar deficit.
Do you want me to give the reimbursement, break down the table? Well, I'll request reimbursement and Chief Lloyd's here to give us more details, but the vast majority of our request for reimbursement was driven by DPW expenses. It is for the, the powers that be in emergency management to determine the scheduling of those reimbursements and what would be considered a qualified expense. Those rules are, I think, we probably get some of it. I think it's healthy to be skeptical to say that you get all of it back. You're at ninety-five?
Ninety-five, that was a preliminary number and obviously seventy-five, twenty-five. So automatically lose, lose twenty-five percent of that. And if you were to get it all back, and who's to say we're going to qualify for?
At least it would be something.
Right, and returning will also be an issue.
How does that work on an accounting basis?
This is the, the main point we've been dancing around to figure how do we score it? Because the expense was incurred this fiscal year. We applied for it this fiscal year. But if the federal fiscal year and the federal payment system doesn't give us this reimbursement until after July first, how is Denise going to handle it? We've, we've started to come to the consensus that we would score it this fiscal year if we had an award letter. So even if we didn't have the cash in hand, if we had an award letter, we could book it as an accounts receivable that is a credible promise to pay from the reimbursement authority. If that doesn't happen, if we don't see an award letter until after July first, then it'll be booked for next year's books.
Does it get booked into the general fund or as a reduction in the line item expenditures?
That's where, I mean, we're still not a lot of clarity. I mean, I think we're starting to look at, it's a refund to that line.
So, like, just twenty seconds on this. If it were booked in the current fiscal year we're in and it came in after the fiscal year, it would automatically trigger going into the paving account, right?
Right.
Okay.
We haven't even got Nemo money back, never mind the most current one. We're going back two plus years, we haven't got reimbursement.
Well, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for that.
Nemo's a bad storm. We're in a different situation with Nemo. We're in a different situation with that storm because the Newport Weather Station didn't put us into the worst area. It's my understanding from... That's my understanding from Chief Lloyd. So this, you know, is different. Steve, I've got a question about your account numbers here.
Okay.
Because when I signed this transfer request, I thought I understood what I was doing. Your fifty-one-one-one account maintenance workers, that's your staff at the barn, and I thought you were taking unused salary from a gentleman who's out long-term and moving in. If you're looking at the maintenance forming account and the seasonal worker, you need to go to different lines. So the seasonal labor is fifty-one, thirty, fifty-one, eighty. And the maintenance forming position is fifty-one, thirty, fifty-one, twenty. If that was in attention, that's fine. But I was counting on isn't that money to pay the rest of your bills.
No, you're right there. The, the numbers that are here are standing, they're, it wasn't from the leftover account that we had for the forming. It is, is my maintenance workers because we've had a funny number.
All right, then.
These numbers are right because we've had a man out on medical leave for quite a long time, unpaid medical leave. So that account has been gathering. All right, thank you for the correction. Yeah.
We'll get the rest anyway, it's just an hour.
No, yeah, okay. No, you're correct.
Any further questions from the council? I can entertain a motion to, to approve these transfers?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion be made in second.
Please. You know open this to the public at all?
Usually not, Joe.
A public comment? Okay.
I could though if you'd be brief.
I will be very brief.
Okay.
John Cudiero, Blueberry Lane. I know this is an unprecedented year, but if I had to guess, this isn't the first time we've transferred money within the department to cover snow removal. Two points. Moving forward, maybe we can consider some type of exclusionary fund within the department and budget a little extra each year. And even if it takes us ten years to need it, it will be there. And second, if, moving forward this year, if any funds are used from other departments other than the DPW, if and when we are reimbursed, I ask you to refund those departments before we refund the DPW. I don't think, I don't think other departments should not get refunded when money was taken from them and for it all to go back to the DPW. So if you could, if we have some room, I know the roads are a mess and they need paving, but for a hundred percent of the reimbursement to go back to DPW, I don't think it would be fair to the other departments if money is taken from them. And I understand it may have to be and I would support that because we have to keep the roads clear and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? So motion's been made in second. All those in favor? unanimous. The next one is an update on FY two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget. We have a copy of the final budget which was approved by the town council last Tuesday and sent to the budget committee. Any discussion from the council members? Anything to add to that or...
I'll summarize it. It was a very stony, nasty night.
I was at work.
And we did not have every single council member able to make it and very few people from the public possibly have gone out, although Mrs. Black was there.
Where was she?
Mrs. Black's there.
Oh.
In my twelve years, we've made a home, white knuckled the whole way for two hours, two-hour tour, so to speak. But the bottom line is this, just to summarize for everyone, this is a very important fact. The town participates in the health insurance pool through the inter-local trust. Our rates are established by our claims experience. The lower claims we have, the lower we will pay to cover our covered lives in the following year. To this point in the year, last year, the town to you gave four million dollars in claims. To this point this year, we have five million dollars in claims. So our original starting point in the rate-setting conversation was that we, if we were in a more traditional insurance environment, our rates would go up twenty-four percent. By participating in inter-local trust, there is a number of rate-setting decisions that smooth these effects out and prevent volatile shocks to cities and towns and our local funds. They understand that we can't just reach into some limitless fund and support a twenty-four percent increase. So our claims experience is factored into the rate-setting based on twenty-four months in the past. So the good news is, a lot of the upward rate pressure was dulled by our very favorable claims experience last year. So after other adjustments are made, it's running, Mr. and Val from the trust does a great job of expanding them, but it usually takes him an hour, maybe he has an hour right now. We ended up at fourteen percent. At least that was the number that was given right before the employee's benefits coming in. But I'm pretty sure that's the number that stuck to Tiverton as we went along. The bad news of this is that this bad claim here will last into the next rate-setting process because if you're using twenty-four months for experience, it's always unlikely that fiscal seventeen will see very much downward pressure. Will still be in a double-digit increase or very close to that. So for budgeting purposes looking ahead, we need to make provision for multiple year savings in order to offset this bad period of claims experience. So to that end, when I sat with the council that night, the cuts that I proposed to the budget I already, that you'd already seen several times, were on the capital side so that we could take out many payments for this year, but future years, so that we would actually think of it a little bit. So we took the later ones out, took other capital items out, other cuts were made to try to keep us to what we already understand is an incredibly pressured budget. But we have, if we are parachuted with three rip chords on it, we've pulled to our next year's budget and, Mr. Cudiero, one more point. Some of the pressure that we're under is due to the fact that when an emergency was declared, we didn't have a general funding surplus to go to to offset and do the smoothing. And so smoothing for one year because of the petitionist's budget, but it also put me in a position to not have any smoothing in future years. One other, actually, I want to give you, I don't want to confuse fiscal years because people, I fear to confuse it myself, so I'm sure others who don't do it every day, we can confuse too. But this current fiscal year, we just talked about, we just talked about the crisis of the snow, we talked about difficulty with one of our overtime accounts. From the bearing of many of those, it's that in the past, this town has taken any equity distribution from the inter-local trust and put it in a holding account for rate stabilization. In fact, it really was Mr. Gonsalves' habit to always put the entire equity distribution into this, to the point now where we are over the cap. The trust is kicking money out of our account because we don't want it there, we don't want it to be our bank. So this year, we're going to take a mandatory distribution from our rate stabilization account of ninety-two thousand dollars. We have budgets in forty, they're more or less, not that they can't force us, but they're more or less forcing us, they're going to give us a check for ninety-two this fiscal year. So I think that's everything we've got. Different fiscal year, we're already past two on this one, but that's going, that's going to help soften the burden of some unanticipated expenses in DPW. So that's your full updating on virtual revenue we're looking at this week.
Just one question, please. I'm hearing two different versions of the oldest reimbursement for the library bond. Heard it may not appear in this year's budget and then I'm hearing it may. So I, where are we on that? When are we going to have an answer?
Counselman Sussa, I bought a very expensive crystal ball.
Yes.
And I'm afraid it's not the right model for determining how the state of alignment for management accounts. What I will say is that I'm aware of the pressures that we face. The more time we give them, the more time hopefully they will use to do the right thing, which is try to reimburse this next fiscal year on time. So that includes, you know, consulting as much as we can with our building inspector and financial, make sure that scheduling is adhered to, get the CEO as quickly as possible, make sure you dot your i's, cross your t's, identify problems already. While the construction crew is still going to make sure you get it done. And we had a brief conversation, if anything was required to go to the planning board, is that will cause delay. That needed to be resolved as well. It's my understanding, I don't believe, we need to go back to the planning board for any further approvals when he changes the plans. So we're on it. What does that mean now? Get the CEO as quickly as possible, follow the paperwork as quickly as possible and ask them to do the best they can. And I'm sure we will ask our legislators to shepherd this through the process. We absolutely have to have plan for the worst, hope for the best.
Well, my only point being is, I've heard it repeated a time when I was here, and when the fellow was here for all of us, he said generally the fresh, it follows a year behind. It's going to get into the legislative hopper, it's going to be passed through the budget and then the money has to be appropriated to all of us to come back to the town. So the budget comes out in June, prefer, you know, I'm thinking they're working on it already upstate, it's, so.
The last time the town's treasurer testified and believed that these meetings were bore, it's either the budget committee or the council, but I believe it was a Saturday morning council meeting. She represented in public that, I quote, this is her speaking, "I have the cash, I can get you through this. So if we book it as a receivable to our own accounts, it can be managed, it won't cause us into a fiscal crisis." So to me, that's our plan for the worst. Still hoping for the best. We have to manage both sides of it, but.
I have a few questions on this budget. Who and what is driving the incident rate? You know, it goes through the roof like it did this year. Is there a certain...
Fair question. There's always sort of things that somebody with the data can tell you because there's HIPAA considerations, PHA considerations that go into it. So I'll answer the question. Are we looking at a pool-wide flow of experience that's overwhelming our high deductible HSA plan? Or are we looking at a small pool of very high claims? I believe we're looking at a very small pool of high claims. And so that, the fundamental economics of the town's high deductible HSA plan is still so, is still, still very low boost of the communities frankly. But if you have a past million dollar claim, you have a fourth thousand dollars deductible right away the first day you worked on the doctor's office. That's, I think that's what we're up against. We cannot narrow it down to our pools because some of our pools are so small, you'd be able to identify individuals if you knew who was out. So we just can't do that. Okay?
Just one last question. And I wasn't here for the fun. I know we had taken seventy thousand dollars out of the funds that were available from Rasha for health, was that correct?
I don't remember, was it Nancy?
I think we did have a forty.
I thought it was forty something.
Forty.
We took out the staples.
Forty thousand. There's also a twin issue, Dave, so we haven't done that yet. That transaction had not occurred with the trust yet.
I thought there was more than that, I thought there was two hundred.
Yes.
Yes.
There is.
You need to use all of it next year. Okay, just to get to the next, if we made a hundred and twenty-three, yeah.
All right.
So we booked that the council, the reverend, okay.
It's on the reverend.
I said I wasn't here.
And we haven't, we haven't used the forty thousand yet either.
Okay.
It's like incredible.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, moving on. New Business Recreation Commission requests amendment to Code of Ordinance, Chapter fifty-eight, Article Two, Peddlers and Hawkers, scheduled by the beginning of April thirteenth. Any discussion?
Oh, I, sorry. Does this, was, was this looked at by the solicitor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was drafted by the solicitor.
It was drafted by the solicitor. Okay. The only, I've read it a few times, this, this paragraph, actually this sentence disguised as a paragraph.
Thank you.
Is, we're in a semi-code, broad, narrowly law. And I don't know that I understand what it means. I know what it's supposed to mean, but it's a legal thing that maybe you can just help me.
Sure. The gist of it is, your current ordinance provides that if you, you give a peddler's and a hawker's license and to remind people, peddlers are the ones who move about from place to place, like the ice cream trucks and the lemonade trucks that drive along the street, you have to keep moving. Hawkers are someone who have a location set up and hawk to you, get your fresh flowers here or whatever. Those licenses, we have said they're not valid, they can't be used within five hundred feet of any public beach or in any designated town recreation area. And then there's a previous exception that someone put in there about, except by teams, leagues, or organized youth groups conducting approved recreation activities. Now what is going on is, my understanding is that the Recreation Committee, Commission is looking to solicit RFPs for, one, someone to do kayak rentals and lessons at Fogland Beach. They both do rentals and have lessons as part of the recreation program, that people could have a week of these stand-up paddle boards or kayak lessons and the like. And the second aspect is to solicit RFPs, possible food vendors there. Someone that, you know, you knew they'd be a regular time so that, again, if these kids are at the program and they don't have a lunch, they know, yeah, if you give them some money, they can go, there's going to be a place, they can buy a hot dog for lunch or whatever. But this ordinance, as it's written now, would prohibit that unless they were more than five hundred feet away. So that's why I've added the thing, I changed the approved because it's kind of funky anyway as to what an approved recreation activity was, when it's really meant to be approving these, these hawkers and peddlers. So that's why I said, as approved by the Recreation Committee and accept as may be authorized by the town council in accepting proposals or bids, provided, I know, I've got it a little bit, I've got, I've got it extra wording there, but the idea being that you've got to solicit the Recreation Commission for their advice and recommendation, you're the first ones, you can't just say, oh, we'll pick that one. You've got to at least have their recommendation and then authorized by the town council since it's going to be some sort of town contract. Even though you might not be paying money, might be, there's money coming the other way that they're paying you for the privilege of being there.
Would this cover, I'm thinking, would this cover any non-recreation related activities? Say festivals or a farmer's market or anything like that?
It could in that, but it would have to be, it would have to be approved by the Recreation Committee first.
Yes.
Or...
Whether it'd be have to be recommended.
Recommended.
By the Recreation Committee.
Okay. I see.
Right. The as approved by the Recreation Commission is really just tacking on to the first part about the organized youth groups that are already there. I just moved the word approved. Instead of saying approved recreation activities, I added as approved by the Recreation Commission. So that's dealing with the first part, the stuff that's already going on with the softball leagues and the like. And if I had had more time, I could have, could have drafted it with even, with at least a few more periods perhaps.
I didn't mean to be on time.
No.
It is.
True.
Very confusing.
I welcome, I welcome editing for clarity.
So we'll have a public...
Well, we'll try to actually, this is to get it advertised in public hearing, we'll try to add some punctuation and...
Imposited in this somewhere?
Anyway, I tell my, I will go back, I will do what I tell my daughter to do, which is go read Ernest Hemingway, short declarative sentences. So I will, I'll go back and try to do that and come back with some shorter declarative sentences by the time of the public hearing.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'll take a look at this too because even the first paragraph is a little clunky and actually in the first, end of the first sentence, it says you need a license or do not need a license for persons selling farm or garden produce, including flowers that they grew, or persons selling works of art or crafts. It just, it just goes on and on and on and it just... It just, it just goes on and on and on, and it's just very confusing. So maybe we can.
Let's fix it up. Look, look at it from a historical point of view, you're, it's like when you excavate archaeology and you go deeper and deeper into the ruins, as you go back through these different clauses, you're going back further and further to the original ordinance.
Do you need to schedule us for a public hearing?
Yes.
I move that we schedule a public hearing, April 13th, for amendment to the Hawkers, Peddlers and Hawkers ordinance, which is Chapter 15, F 58, Article 2.
Second. Or should we name second, all those in favor? Town administrator scheduling a public hearing on April 13th for fee resolution. It's going to be a long. April 13th meeting. All right. Do I have a, any discussion, amendment, motion?
I, the only discussion I have is, I'm glad we're finally talking about this again.
I know.
And I'd be happy to make a motion that we schedule a public hearing on April 13th for the fee resolution for fees and fines 2015.
Second. Motion to be made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, against? Councilman DiMadera's vote for a permanent hiring of temporary planning and zoning land use attorney. As, maybe some people don't know, Peter Ruggiero, Ruggiero is no longer a planning and zoning land use attorney. It came about with, there we are, we had RFPs out for all three attorneys, and the council decided on who to interview. Mr. Ruggiero's law firm was not picked, he was notified, and the judge discretion has resigned as the land use attorney. This all happened on Wednesday morning. We had a zoning meeting on Wednesday, Mr. Tights, Attorney Tights agreed to go to that because it was last minute, and it was, I felt it would be unfair to reschedule it. Now we have the planning board meeting tomorrow. Mr. Tights is also offered to go, but I would feel, since I have a meeting tonight, I would like the opinion of the council and a vote on whether or not we'll have Attorney Tights there tomorrow. Our only other course of action would be to postpone that meeting. And we have a Saturday morning, our first round of interviews start, and then Tuesday we have the rest. So hopefully we would have put Monday, I'm sorry.
Saturday the interviews, or just the?
Saturday's the interview.
Saturday it is.
Monday's interview. So hopefully we'd have an attorney within the next two weeks. But we also have a dead, a dead, the planning board also has a dead one with the Capriano group for May 21st, I believe.
May 11th.
May 11th, it's like, okay. So that's where we have to decide whether we want Attorney Tights to be there tomorrow so they won't have to postpone that meeting. And then by the time they probably would have another public meeting, we would have the attorney hired, but then we'd have, have to think of continuity also. Any discussion?
I just had a question for Mr. Tights. Are you familiar enough with the Capriano plan, or do you feel you could act, I mean, should we cancel, or are you telling me that you can accurately and professionally represent, I know you're professional, but accurately represent the town?
Well, who gives advice?
I don't want to pressure you into doing this, in other words, I'd like you to say to me that it's not a problem and you can do it, or we should postpone, your choice.
No, I think, I have, since I learned of this on Wednesday morning, I've met with various, I have talked with Peter Ruggiero, I met this morning with Steve Hughes, and Kate and Mark, and looked over the files, and I met with Kate last week as well, and got some of the materials. So, I do feel that I can represent the planning board at tomorrow night's meeting. And I offered to, my, my job here is to defend the town, support and represent the town. I'm happy to do it, I'm also happy to not do it, and have a night at home. I, I will say, I think, at least, one of Mr. Ruggiero's stated reasons for resigning was he was concerned that there would be a change in solicitor midway through this process of crafting the decision. Because the planning board needs to talk amongst themselves and debate and decide what they want in a decision, direct the solicitor to draft a decision, and we have to draft a decision and then come back to them for it. So I would say that, that's the only thing, I think if, if you're going to do it, and I hate to do it to myself, but I think that is the thing, if you're going to say you want me there tomorrow to continue your course, is kind of saying, okay, I should be there, depending what happens tomorrow, but also the meeting on the 24th, their next public hearing, and another meeting in early April, when there would probably be more decisions in time, I actually have the dates, but essentially a couple of meetings. It's several meetings between now and the May meeting, when they would vote prior to the May 11th deadline. May 5th is the last meeting that they would have, that's a regular meeting, and we talked about that today, that they would flip and have their regular business on May 19th after the deadline, so they would have May 5th available as a final date for adoption of a decision. So if you're going to, if you're going to, to have someone else there, they should probably be there through the whole process. You do have to do it, if not approved by May 1st, by May 11th. If not approved or denied by May 11th, then the master plan will be approved by default.
Yeah, it's the timeline.
I make a motion to continue that, to cancel that planning board meeting tomorrow.
Well.
I'll second that. We don't have the authority to cancel.
We don't have a choice.
We don't have a solicitor, we don't have a choice.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I, I have a comment too.
Can I just get the motion first, I want to make sure you are making a motion to postpone.
Peter second. Well, not cancel.
I think it's, I think, I think the motion that you're looking for is that.
It would not be.
Right, to advise the planning board that there will not be legal representation available for that meeting, and request that it be canceled.
I make a motion to advise the planning board to cancel the meeting.
Not have legal representation.
Without legal representation.
And Peter. I would propose.
Postpone the meeting.
And Peter second that. Now discussion, Brad, would you?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and a statement, I think. The first is, have we or anyone else asked the planning board for input or advice or an opinion of this matter, in advance of this meeting?
No, you did speak with Steve Hughes on Wednesday, was that correct?
Sure, Brad, we must do as the mother is needing to wait, to prepare for this meeting on Tuesday, just in case.
The second question is, no, it's the same question, a statement. I have absolutely no problem with having Andy there. The problem I have is delaying this process any longer, and if we're looking at a timeline of at least about a week or two to find a new attorney, and maybe, depending on scheduling, another week to transition or to hire him, we've got six to eight weeks before a final decision needs to be made, and we've just put a meeting or two sort of on the back burner, I wonder if we run the risk of getting too close to that May 11th, because that is the nightmare situation. If we pass the May 11th deadline without a decision, a default judgment, or whatever you want to call it, default approval of the master plan, I don't think it's anything that anybody, I don't think anybody wants that. So that's my concern.
I'd just like to say something, my, another one of my concerns is, a brand new attorney coming into town that may not be as familiar as he needs to with this process, and he's been here a long time in town. He's worked with the zoning board, the planning board, he knows the history of the town, he knows, I just don't know if a new person could come in here and get himself up to date and ready to go, right away. And the delay may be more than two weeks, because he's going to have to look at all, the whole project, he's going to have to familiarize himself with it, look at how we run things as far as the comp plan, and. So that's my concern, really, is that I don't know if we could have somebody totally on board by the time, really knowing it.
Right, well, I'm going to join with Mrs. DiMadera's, and Mr. Tights has indicated that he's prepared with the service temporary counsel to the planning board. I don't want to see any type of delay at all, and I think that we would have delay, it would be inevitable. If we're going to hire somebody new to this project, and we plan to, is not going to be familiar, perhaps, with Tiverton, and certainly would have no reason to be familiar with the Capriano project. Mr. Tights has been here for years, he's familiar with the background of his plan, he knows the personalities and the people doing, since he's already indicated, and has a planning background. I don't know what else we would need at this point. We're just talking about a temporary appointment. For that purpose, Mr. Tights, I have full confidence can handle the matter.
Also, I, one other thing is, Steve, Steve Hughes has been consulted on this since, since we found this out last Wednesday, as well as Kate, they have met with Andy, they have not come back to any of us with any concerns, and they shouldn't move forward. It was just, I felt that we all needed to take the responsibility of who was going to do this.
The only concern I have, and again, we have no concern with Mr. Tights attending that meeting tomorrow either, but he kind of brought up exactly what I'm going to say right now, is that, he attends that meeting tomorrow night, we're interviewing Friday, Saturday morning, let's say that Mr. Tights's friend doesn't get reappointed as a solicitor, we're starting off, you're the new, we're the advisor anyway.
Correct.
So, what's the difference? If we wait and see, or he attends it tomorrow night? So it might be a one-day fix, that's all it might be.
Oh, we, we could just appoint Andy to stay with this for the length of the.
For the rest of the.
Yes.
If he would stay.
If he would stay on, but that would be Andy's choice.
Well, the concern I've had from Dave Lee is that with the interviews of three attorneys to fill three different positions, what continuity would we have at all if all three of those attorneys are not rehired, not reappointed, and we look for new counsel? We are going to have a massive complicated learning curve for all three of those attorneys. I'd like to have someone on board who is at least familiar with these issues, and familiar with the town, and what our position is, and familiar with the personalities of that planning board. I don't think we could have a, I don't think we could have just a clean sweep at this, at this point. I don't expect that we're going to end up with anyone who's going to have a history of the background to these issues, and who's going to provide us with the continuity that we need on what is a very, very important issue to this town.
I think it's just an unfortunate timing, right now, this is all occurring, but we have to just be careful of what's going on and how we're going to handle it.
I'd be like, Joe, I disagree, I think a competent attorney should be able to leave the plans in place and get on board, because we're going to ask anyone to get on board right away, and I don't think the continuity with Mr. Tights is there, because he hasn't been on the planning board for years, with Ruggiero that was there. And so I have a complete issue, and I have a faith that if we're going to hire a new attorney, he'll be competent enough to handle this job, so my, our motion, I believe we should ask for a vote.
Here we go. Any further discussion?
Well, just to answer Jay real quickly, I mean, we've changed solicitors before.
We're not, we're not talking about changing.
Well, the three attorneys.
We have, we're all three important.
Depending on the council, the county, the different councils are brought in, it's our new representatives here. It has happened in the past, but.
This is a whole different.
This is where I'm kind of torn.
To worry about tomorrow.
I'm kind of torn because I, I agree with both sides, that, you know, we need somebody there, and then.
Well, my point is, I don't see any reason to continue this later. We have Mr. Tights who's available, and is familiar with the issues, and I have full confidence with Mr. Tights' background in planning, that they were able to handle this. I just don't want to see it continue this. I don't want to see this, this meeting canceled.
Well, I would just say that the Capriano group has already granted this, I think they're on, what, the second extension now? It's, it's been, there's, part of the problem, as far as the timeline, they've agreed to, I think, two.
I think this is, right, I think, but I can't be certain, but I think, right, yes.
So, I mean, I think that they have been pretty, you know, patient with the speed of the town, and they know the glacier-like speed and.
Joe, maybe, maybe I'm not that, maybe I'm not that patient. This would be the third town council that has considered the Capriano project. At some point it does get rather than just delays, it gets to the point where it's ridiculous. And we're going to have a, a, a planning board that would probably could have a complete turnover in the time that they've been addressing this issue. I know that they've had this issue before then for 23 months. That's why I'm concerned about getting any further delay here.
Again, I reiterate that I believe that a new attorney would better suit our town, I'll go that far, based off of the actions that Mr. Tights did at that last zoning meeting.
But that's.
My personal opinion is that we have, we're going to hire a new attorney anyway, and we're going to have a new regula, and I don't think a new attorney is going to take months to review this scenario.
You'll keep in mind that Attorney Tights would be there just to advise as far as procedural and this is.
That's what I'm concerned about, okay.
All right, well, I have a motion on the floor, Joan wants to speak in there.
I almost forgot you.
No, I always have to put two cents in. To, I have to agree with Peter, that a competent attorney would be able to get up to speed. Just take for instance, if the person got the bid died, there would have to be a new attorney, who would have to get up to speed? So, I would like to see the continuation start with the new attorney. And as far as Jay's confidence in Mr. Tights, I don't share that confidence. We have seen many mistakes occur, even though he has a wealth of land use experience, zoning experience, we have seen errors time and again, and I, I don't have that confidence. I can mention the Tiverton Yacht Club with the spot zoning, with the waterfront commercial, I just don't see it. I would like to see a new attorney step up and get up to speed and shepherd this through to completion.
Any other discussion? Nancy, could you read the motion? Because it got a little bit, I just wanted to hear what it said.
The motion was being made by Councilor Perry and seconded by Councilor Nulla, to advise the planning board they would not have legal counsel, a legal representation, and request they postpone their meeting.
Is that? Is that clear for everybody?
Agreed with it, Mr. Perry.
Yep. The motion's been made in second, all those, four opposed. Motion's passed.
Four motion?
Yes.
So the planning board should have an attorney?
We don't, we haven't hired one yet.
We haven't even hired one. Saying after Saturday?
No, no.
I just think they should at least settle on the planning board.
Well, it's like I said, it'll probably be two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks.
It'll be two weeks tonight, probably.
They have to have two weeks, and a week to have two weeks tonight.
It'll be two. It'll be two weeks tonight.
I just want to make sure that...
And that's as long as we find somebody in the four that we want to interview because we may decide that we don't like any of those four.
And then we're going to really be in trouble.
Then we're going to really be in trouble.
Two readings and a...
Well, that'll be up to the planning board and we'll see what Steve Hughes decides.
Excuse me. So when is the public supposed to know whether or not this meeting is going to take place tomorrow later? I mean, you have to give people who are new to it...
They're probably opening and postponing. That's what, that's probably what they'll do.
They'll have to have the meeting and then they'll...
Right. They'll open it and then they'll... I mean, we've done that where I've opened different...
So can you say that it's likely that this meeting will not take place?
I can't speak for that. That would have to be the plan. The chairman of the planning board is going to have to make that decision.
So can you keep voting for tonight and just to let them take a vote to say, okay?
Yes. Open public forum. Open public forum for announcements and comments. Bruce Cox, Stonebridge, Dayton.
Good evening. The Harbor Commission met last Tuesday. And an item I had been the erosion of the Stonebridge abutment, which was actually covered in the Secana Times, an administrator has been on the paper showing the accelerated erosion of that, and it brought up the question. And we're fortunate, our commission, to have a number of people that lived on the waters at Tibbeton virtually all their lives and extremely competent, extremely competent harbor master, Clay Vannier, the harbor master, prior to the removal of the stone, the railroad trussel and such from the river and the excavation and dredging that took place of the channel space. And now we're observing this accelerated abutment erosion. We've sort of started discussing that, and that's when it was brought to the attention of other members of the commission, you know, what people have observed on Mr. Tice. Does it all, if I share copies of this letter? Is it...
I can pass that out, yes.
Is this the letter? I did...
It was one of those things, when you scream emergency or fire, you see the smoke, you scream fire, and you wait until your flames come up around you. You have an abutment that if you read this letter, the velocity of the water flowing underneath the Secana River Bridge itself has basically doubled. The, by virtue of charts and data we were able to obtain, the calculations were made by an extremely competent individual minister, you know, Lawrence, as to what rough percentage of increases occurred, and we're seeing changes in the harbor. I know that the VHB had it at 90% engineering was ready to go forward. If they start changing things, I don't want to see this getting mired down in another whole backlog of review administratively by Army Corps of Engineers, CROMC, or anybody because unfortunately what happens is you have a meeting that gets continued because you have changed your counsel or because there's other things on your agenda, whatever, snowstorms. I think this board, this council should declare, indeed, our commission feels quite strongly that this is an emergency situation. And that will give you a heightened review of the law speed by the various boards. We may have somebody like yourselves coming forward and saying, we have a real emergency here. We're watching this thing erode before our very eyes. It's not something that's really slow and gradual, it's disappearing. These are facts that, you know, I'm up against kind of very fairly routine, but I don't have a personal historical knowledge of this observation of what we've seen on the newspaper. Gee, it was so good before, now it's going. We haven't had a wild big hurricane blow out of the earth that suddenly took it all away. It just has been eroding faster and faster. So with that, we felt it was important to bring it to your attention. I discussed it with Mr. Tice. He doesn't feel it's appropriate for it to be an emergency situation right now from the standpoint of meeting hours, but I'd certainly ask that this be next agenda. You take this up and move this forward and declare the emergency to all reviewing agencies in VHB to keep this thing going forward. You have, as I understand it, a grant that funded a lot of the reconstruction of it. If you lose it, it's going to be gone. And at least now you have a foundation to work with, but once it's gone, it's gone. And it's going to be a whole different ballgame rebuilding that thing as opposed to shoring it up.
Okay, so we put it underneath the agenda. Thank you for sharing your attention.
We'll sign the next agenda, just for our own education. We did the revised plan. I thought they were going to drive piles and I saw it.
I, you know, with all due respect to everyone, the purpose of that newspaper article was to demonstrate that we're aware of the situation. Mr. Russo, in this contract, one of the things that planners tasked with is to make sure the project's on track. So not to steal Mark's thunder in his first report, but we've already started the meetings. Mark, I can't remember if I missed quote, but a road were at 90% design. This involves driving sheets inside instead of outside. We weren't able to vouch when it occurred and talk to the abutment. All of this was in the story, so...
But that stopped...
I agree that it's an emergency, but it's not construction season yet. So we are still on track to move forward on time with the revised plan as it was described in the newspaper article. And, D E N, we've taken the first step to ask D E N to hand over the CROMC approval process for us so that we'll be simultaneously permitted, so we'll save time on the bureaucratic side. So there are no indications to me that this rehab of the bridge abutment is nearly off the rails. But I appreciate Mr. Cox's level and the Harbor Commission's attention because it draws... People have to remember that when a trussel was removed, it changed the flow of water here in the harbor. So it's had a dramatic effect on the erosion pattern on the abutment. And we don't really see it well from the road. You have to climb behind me and take a good look, but blocks are falling off, including retaining walls, maybe it's many road. So all the funds are getting sucked out from the joints and the blocks are just falling down. So it's a significant problem. But as soon as we get any kind of reasonable clearance in the weather, we should be moving forward very fast with this permitting process. It would be before the council for a public hearing discussion and approval before it goes forward.
Just from my own brain, all the sheathing, is that... The interlock, the interlock plates are actually, so that the water cannot go under the bridge anymore. That's studying that plan.
Yes.
Okay.
They're going to be driven from the outside.
Yeah.
Now they're going to be inside the abutment. And the caps over the top of them are going to give you the platform for a walk.
It still gives you the same water, you know, blocks the water from going under the abutment.
Significantly more riprap will be utilized on the outside.
Bruce, while you're here, just a quick question. Is there any concern from the commission or any of the members about anything other than the abutment or we, that this is caused? Oh, like Matt was saying, it's changed the way the water flows. Is that a concern that we ought to be looking at going forward?
Well, we haven't tried to analyze the currents within the basin. And canceling measures and could do with them perhaps, once again, pinch off the North End, but that was not, not in the topic of conversation. It's just, you know, awareness of the potential issue of, I mean, while they may say it at 90%, my fear is not that, gee, VHB hasn't, I read the article that they're proposing. My fear is someone says, we got to go back and reconfirm this and now re-review this and that sort of thing. I've seen that happen. I've witnessed it, I've witnessed it after, you know, the last hurricane came through down in South County. Until someone stood up and jumped up and down and said, if we have an emergency, we're going to have X number of houses that you're going to lose.
Yeah.
People were going to say, well, let's go and re-look at this. And you just, by nature, there's no need for that. The currents, you have, that current is twice a day.
Yeah. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. I just wanted to make sure we were thinking about other things too. The thing I'm thinking of is moring fields moving around, but I'm not...
There are moring fields, mores that have been basically lost because of increased current velocity. I mean, whether or not they want to put in a larger flotation device or not. There are mores that survive in really high velocity current areas. But that is just, you know, an indicator as to what has changed.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Palatier, eye-opening.
Good evening. You see, we have no pictures on the walls. They're all Tibbeton-related, and it's interesting to note how different, Tibbeton differently. And I'm amazed at how gorgeous the Secana River Bridge looks, the old one. It's amazing. And it all just shows we all see things in a different light. And I would like to draw your attention that the opening reception will be on Sunday, and I hope you'll come. Bring as many people as possible because the more, the more festive it is. And that'll undo all the fact that we can't have a real one, but, you know, bring as many people as possible. And a number of these pictures are for sale and that, and I think it's an economic boost to people who want to sell their artwork and gain financial profit and fame. And I think you should consider it when you are looking for gifts.
Select time, is it?
The reception is between 2:00 and 4:00 at the Town Hall. So please come and buy pictures and...
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Town Australia items and announcements, approval of FTR resolution for sale of vacant parcels and notice lots, 306-13640 Bridgeport Road.
My recommendation with the council, send to the people a resolution on the FTR ballot authorizing the council to sell a small parcel, a small vacant parcel on Bridgeport Road. It was the former location many, many years ago. I believe in a one-room or two-room schoolhouse that burned. There's really nothing there now except a small granite stairway, if you really look carefully, it's there, down to Bridgeport Road. The abutment, first approach from back in the summer, we said to them, the charter has a process for the sale of land and the town buildings, so we have to compile the charter, the next FTR. But there is an interested buyer, and we have to follow an auction process. My, there are different considerations here, so not to stir the pot too much, but if you sell capital and you have a one-time revenue gain, best thing you can do is look to where you're really hurting, long-term, big problems. Make sure, try to designate it for that, if you feel so, to do so. My recommendation is that any additional funds, one-time revenues, be set aside for landfill closure. Because I think it's a, we cannot put our hands in the sand about this problem. We need to identify the resources for the new rooms to address this. So we're not talking a lot of money here. This is 44107 acre. So, you know, I don't know how much we're going to get, but it'll be a start. And we also demonstrate to the people that we have our priority straight that we're going to, and I think we're going to them to pay for this landfill closure if we don't have to. Just my thoughts.
Wouldn't that have to be...
Yeah, you'd have to amend this. And I don't even know if you can vote on it or if you just need to dig it under advisory or the solicitor was just, wasn't posted for a vote, but I suppose it could be further on.
Yeah, so it's approval.
And I think you could amend it, you could amend it to provide that the funds go to the landfill closure account. You'd never get amendment to the purpose of the resolution.
Discussion?
I think it's reasonable and the amendment is reasonable. Which would read something like, with proceeds to be deposited or earmarked for the landfill closure account. Not earmarked, but designated, that's the word.
Proceeds designated to the land. May I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a motion.
Wait a second.
Sir?
Motion remain in second is to approve the resolution with... With earmarked. Mm-hmm.
Yes, with proceeds designated to the land.
Motion remain in second, others in favor. Emeledis. Mr. Counsel announcement, comments, and questions.
I may have one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to add to your approach. One thing I'd draw to the council's attention, actually to the public, two things. One very quick thing, solarized Tibbeton continues. So worthwhile effort, if you have a southern or western exposure and you want to participate in the program, make sure you get in touch with the local people. We have all the links on our town website so that you can follow them. We are, our goal is to beat New Smithfield, to be competitive. We got 86 contracts. There's a good chance we did better. We have much better exposure in Tibbeton to the city, so. I'll just remind you why this is important. It all comes down to your pocketbook. And if you don't want grid, national grid coming to you and saying, well, it's going to cost you a lot more for your transmission because we need to build another substation to transfer enough power to this region to support it, or you could say, we're going to solarize as much as we can, reduce peak usage in the afternoon and the summer, which is our problem time, through use of solar power and any that's stored that we get back. You can do your part. And right now, there's a federal program supporting it, so go along with it. One other thing I want to do to the council's attention as the approach, I don't know that we can sell the FTR with many FTR items. I just want to constantly remind people, section 1010 is the charter with respect to the wastewater commission. There's some cleanup that needs to be done. And we don't want to create confusion in terms of rebuilding the thing. We still have the charter that commands us to do certain things, but we find the district to do those functions. So that situation needs to be addressed. Obviously, this is my turn. I don't expect anyone to comment. I'm just raising it to your attention. That's all I have, my friend.
Counsel announcements, comments, and questions. Mr. Mebbe, you listed three items that I wanted to...
No, I'm not going to do all three. I asked Mrs. Mello to use discretion and place them in my agenda items, and your discretion was all three items.
Well, I was also...
To start off with, the item number two, which reads, discussion and possible action on proposal for unaccepted streets. We need that at this point. Mr. Belucci is still working on the numbers that would be related to that proposal.
So we'll table that to a further, to another meeting.
This, I'll try to be very brief on. I'm adding this in a sense to the agenda, but it's really just a comment. And I've received a couple of phone calls on this already. In the Secana Times, under the editorial heading of Ask the Boarders, the proposal is being made in the editorial that with respect to the issue of the Tibbeton Glen, that we have a referendum. And this proposal is that the referendum be either binding or non-binding. Actually, we did raise this issue with the previous town council. I think it goes back about two and a half years. And at that time, the decision was made that we would not have a referendum. The issue raised comes down to two types of referendums. It's either binding or non-binding. The binding is easy. I picked up a case today at the library, L A Way Realty and all versus Town Council of Towne and Cumberland. Clearly having a binding resolution with respect to a matter that has to be decided by the planning board and the town council and as a matter of zoning would be, to use the language of the court, illegal and invalid. So I'll pass copies of that opinion home in case anyone wants to raise this issue again. The second issue is the issue of whether or not... And the reason being, even if you call a referendum non-binding, it obviously is going to influence especially elected officials. It'll influence and perhaps be determinative for a member of a town council. And it certainly would influence, I think, to some extent, a member of a planning board or a zoning board. So Mr. Tice had given us his opinion maybe two, two and a half years ago, that he was, his proposal was, his suggestion was, that we not have a referendum binding or not, or non-binding. You folks can read the opinions as well as I can and make your own decision.
I hope that's the best.
Now, the other, the other three items, item number two, as I indicated, that is out. Item number one, and I'll read it. Discussion and possible action to amend section 310 of the town charter to include provisions to stabilize the tax rate and or tax levy and increase the unreserved general fund. I'll make this very brief, because I think what we're really looking for here is a date for a public hearing, if that's the view of the, of the majority of the town council. What I'm, the language that I've proposed with respect to any amendment is the language that I've attached to the agenda item. There's no magic to this. For example, I've indicated that we should increase the unreserved general fund to 6% of the town's current operating budget. There's no magic to that. If someone decides that seven would be a better number, or eight would be a better number, that's fine. What I have added here in addition is a provision that any amount above 3% could be used at the discretion of both the town council and the budget committee by a majority vote to help stabilize our tax levies and tax rates. In other words, instead of having the uncertainty every year, is the tax rate and the tax levy going to be going up 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%? We could use any amount in the unreserved general fund in excess of 3% to stabilize that levy or tax rate. Again, there's no magic to any of this language or the proposal, but I think it is important to recognize, and I think you've heard this from a number of people, that our unreserved general fund at this point is rather low in comparison to other communities. We're essentially a $49 million company. I met briefly with Denise Sorette this afternoon, just to get some of the numbers that we have right now. Looking to the budget that's been proposed, according to Denise, the unreserved general fund balance would have to be $2,478,930. That's what it is now. That's what it would be with the budget that we'll be voting on in a few months. Right now, we already have in the unreserved general fund 5.5% of the current budget. All I've proposed is a number of 6%. So as I say, it could be high and it could be lower. The concern I think we should have is that if you look at the charter provision under 310, you can use the first 3% of the unreserved general fund for emergencies, and emergencies are defined as something that's unexpected, unanticipated, essentially an earthquake or the Secana River Bridge falling, something of that sort. We really don't have any discretion to use that first 3%. Above 3% according to Mrs. Sorette, with the current budget, with the budget that's being considered this year, right now, we have an excess over 3% of just about $1 million. We would have $1,7,732. My judgment is, and that was the reason for making this proposal, to increase the number for the unreserved general fund, is that that's probably not enough if we have a real emergency that comes up. And what I'm talking about is not a substantial increase, I'm talking about an increase from what we currently have of roughly 5% and increasing that to 6%. As I say, someone could say 7%, someone could say 8%. So what I'm looking for on that, Mrs. President, Madam President, is a consideration, I move that we schedule this for a public hearing, if that's the view of the majority. At that point, I would expect that we would have the input from the town administrator, the town clerk, and the town treasurer, as to what the appropriate numbers are, and exactly how we would vote discretionary spending above the 3%. That's it. And there's, believe me, no rush to this, Mrs. Mello.
Yes, there's not going to be a rush to this, because this would be a special election to be done, so you know that part, right?
So we could.
Put it on a regular election.
How about we leave that to the clerk's discretion?
I think it's just a matter, really, that's what we need. I'd just like to get it on the table, and let's begin discussing what I think potentially has a, could be a problem issue.
I understand you want it.
That's a motion on the floor, correct?
I'll second his motion. Okay, now the second issue.
Do we have any further discussions?
The motion is to, it's out there, the crowd won't come until June, so there's no set date for it. I gotta get to the budget.
I just want to, you said we'd have to have a special?
Well, how else are you going to change the charter?
During a regular election.
It could be a regular election like Brett's, couldn't it be?
Could be a regular election that's going to take place in 2016? This is a charter amendment. Okay, so it has to be on a general election. So we're going to have one in November of 2016.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're only going to start the process in June or July.
You have a long time now.
You say that, but you want some really complicated issues, and it's worthy of the time invested, because there may be differences of opinion. I like the word capital more than I like the word tax stabilization, because it has the same effect, it's viewed very differently by different people sitting in different chairs in Wall Street, so. But I just feel that that would belabor the point, but it's worth the investment in time. Because if you had a capital improvement plan, it was a separate part of the budget that was funded in a certain proper way, it wouldn't hit the taxpayers' wallets, it'd be something you've saved over a long period of time, but you're not paying interest, and you're staying on schedule and doing the things you should do. Just a thought.
Just real quick, because for years, I think the idea is that the budget committee, going back probably a decade, but was that Sunshine Fund? That we create this Sunshine Fund? And I never sort of heard us go for it, so I just.
Well, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know. Joe, as Matt indicated, there are a number of items that can be up for discussion. That whole issue of capital expenditures and a separate fund for that, whether it's for paving or new equipment, I've kept that totally separate. That creates a whole new, a host of political issues that really aren't directed to this one issue, which is really protecting the town. We're a $49 billion corporation, $49 million company, $1 million to rely on if something goes wrong, really isn't a lot of money.
Well, the town has the ability to borrow money, it also has the ability to put out a supplement tax bill, so.
I have a motion.
We got a lot of time to argue about this.
I have a motion on the floor, and second.
Can I just make one comment? There, the town administrator just mentioned that we have changes that need to be done for wastewater management to be taken out of the charter. That section needs to be amended. This is another potential item in the charter. I'm not sure if we should do these onesies, twosies separately. Maybe it's, we, because we're going to have to advertise this multiple times if you take it separately, maybe it's worthwhile to put together a committee and have them go through with the specific items of looking at this as well as the wastewater management.
See, I'm trying to review. I think if you, yeah, if you elected a charter review committee this, this year, they'd have a year to work and report back by next June, and then you could tab the provisions.
And it'd make more sense.
But that's a special election.
No.
Special election to elect the charter.
You have to elect your charter.
The public then?
You could put them on the general election at that time. All right, well.
Why don't we?
We just have the public hearing in June?
Yes. Well, anyway, let's, let's see, the motion.
This year's due.
The motion's been made in seconds, so that's what.
I'm guessing the motion is to schedule a public hearing for the proposed amendment to the unreserved general fund of the charter. Date to be determined by the town clerk in June.
Should we add?
Motion remain in.
Well, I'm thinking about the other charter changes, and should we try to put those on there too at the same time?
Well, no, it'll just get too complicated.
The vote will happen together.
Agreed, but I know, you just said it, wastewater.
All right, motion been made in second, all those in favor, opposed? Five two. All right, and one more.
Well, the last item, it's item number three on the agenda, has written on the agenda that reads as follows, release of certain executive session minutes relating to business development and sale of industrial park property during the last four years. Over the last two, four, six years, I think we've all heard a number of charges and rumors and gossip that the town council, for whatever reason, has done its best to keep manufacturing and industrial and commercial business out of the town of Tibbeton. Let me summarize my viewpoint on that charge, it's sheer nonsense. Supposedly, the town council has turned down as well multiple offers to buy all of parts in the industrial park. All again nonsense. The problem is, all of this is handled in executive session. What I am proposing is that we carefully redact the minutes for the last four years with respect to all of those subjects. And I'll read, I'll read the explanation I have in the request to place on the agenda. Quote, discussion and possible action to release redacted minutes for executive session meetings of January 2011 through December 2014. Of all discussions and actions taken relating or referring to proposals or offers presented to the town council for manufacturing, industrial, or commercial businesses in Tibbeton, or the purchase of the industrial park or any portion thereof, with redaction of all references to the parties making the offers, offers or proposals, or the amount of any offers made for the purchase of any land, and accepting from this discussion or possible action any offers or proposals still under consideration. It almost sounds like that was written by a lawyer, but in any event, I think we all understand where I'm trying to go. If it's at all possible, I would, I would like to have all of the minutes carefully redacted that address either one of those issues. That is, any effort to bring a business or industrial or commercial development into this town that apparently the town council did its best to keep out, or the sale of any property or portions of property in the industrial park. I'm afraid a lot of people are going to be sadly disappointed, but I, but to the extent possible, I would like to have those minutes redacted and made public.
Want to correct me if I'm wrong, but this is going to take a lot of work and a lot of time.
Not before June. Well, no, I mean, seriously. It's going to take some time, and honestly, I'm bogged down there right now with the FTR. But yes, certainly, if they should be released, they should be released.
And Madam President, just, you know, this I think is going to concern to everybody that's on the town council. But during the election, for example, we had a letter written by somebody who knew that we, the town council somehow had managed to keep a manufacturing business out of, out of town of Tibbeton. Another letter, I think, well, with the election over, we'll never hear anything about that again. There's been another letter in the Secana Times indicating that the town council threw some levers and again set manufacturing business out of the town of Tibbeton. My point is, since I've been on the town council, I don't recall a single manufacturing company that showed any interest in moving to Tibbeton, yet we have people who, if you just keep repeating that same story over and over again, are going to believe it. It never happened. That's why, whatever the timetable, I can live with the timetable. But I would like to know that at some point, we're going to get those records public, and people can make their own judgment as to whether the town council is intentionally keeping companies, industry out of, out of the, out of the town.
Okay, so that's a motion.
That's a motion.
In lawyer, this one here. And so we'll give that motion to Nancy.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, thank you.
There is a second. So motions remain in second, and all those in favor, opposed? Okay, and Nancy, he will pass that motion too. Yes, and we've realized how much work. It'll probably be done in sections.
Madam President, I'm still in council.
Yep, I'm still in town council announcements. Don't you have an announcement?
Well, I have, it's an announcement request. Recently, we had been talking in the budget about storage. As I had indicated, that it was my opinion that we put the addition on Town Hall that we made enough room to fit all the departments in. I've been going around speaking with some of the people around Town Hall, and I found that we may be able to make some more space downstairs for storage, provided we do a little bit of shuffling. I'd like to put together kind of an ad hoc committee to look at Town Hall under the direction of the town administrator, and involving some of the department heads that would be involved in the moves, and try to figure out a way to make a little more room downstairs for storage. If we can make the changes, we could possibly take out a couple of petition walls down there and create a very large storage area.
Matt?
Yeah, I implement the role of the council, so that's what this group wants to do. My view is, storage is pretty much a day-to-day operation, and we just make the calls as information comes in. There are other issues, Councilman, regarding whether or not we ever use Essex again, which is where I think this conversation is really going. And my thought was to try to be faithful to the grantor's wishes with the Essex building and make some use of it. This is, like I say, I implement the role of the council. If the council makes a policy decision to seek legal relief so that it can dispose of the Essex property, then it should just do so explicitly and go for it. And we'll deal with storage as it arises. We're not going to keep that building, because we need a place to park some files. That wasn't my thought. My thought was, we have difficulty getting a legal relief. It is an important historic building in town, and we would keep it and reuse it for a purpose that is close to the original grantor's wishes. So I, you know, I kind of leave it.
Is that what this is about?
The administrator's day-to-day job to make sure.
Yes or no, to respond to the intent of the donor. The intent of the donor, Mrs. Essex, was to provide library service for the town. And if she was alive today, I'm sure she would be right over here telling us, we need to give more money to the library. She'd be on that committee, you know?
I don't think we can say what she would be.
Well, I, I think by the fact that she left the town a building for a library, but now that we have a new library, and if we can move to help, you know, provide some, you know, for that, for that library to get the new one paid for, I think that's more. And to get that house off into somebody's hands, or that building into somebody's hands, who can afford to really do something with that beautiful building, because I know what it's gonna look like in 10 years if the town takes it over, and nobody's gonna tell me different.
All right, Matt, we'll just...
The bottom line, though, is what I was looking to do is to work in Town Hall for a week or so, to float a few ideas, to make some, I think we could move one office upstairs and create quite a bit of room downstairs. Now, if you keep in mind, I mean, I worked to help put this building in the city voluntarily. The bottom floor, at one point, was one open floor. So it's not like there's load-bearing walls down there that anyone would have to deal with. They're just petition walls that can be moved around as easy as you move around the separators in an office. There's definitely room downstairs, provided we do what some of the recommendations are. So that's the idea, is to...
I personally don't think it's the job of the council to make those decisions. It's up to Matt and maybe...
I'm trying to make work from that. That's why I was volunteering to help.
I, I can't.
I appreciate that, Councilman. Why don't you say this much? I mean, if there's anybody... I spent the last six months of my life on this massive purge of all things I don't need anymore, and I take the same mentality to Town Hall, but we're bound by public records retention and other requirements. But if we don't need it, if we don't have a legal requirement to keep it, we're throwing it, we're shredding it, and trying to make room downstairs for things we do need, much of which is in the mailroom. At some point, though, it just becomes a practical matter of just arranging the space around here. We just don't have a lot of budget to do all the things that we all wish we could do.
Well, that was the second part, because I've actually, as I, you know, in the past, we've had the volunteer building committee, and I've actually had a couple of people that would commit to come in and help out, if, you know, working with the, the building maintenance guy, to get some of that work done. So the bottom line is this. I think we need to make some space in Town Hall. There's an item in the budget for off-site storage. I mean, you know, and I think that might have been cut out already, but there's a need for more storage in town, and I think there's a need for a little bit of help to get it done, to push it along. That's my only thing. So we're offering the help. You know, if, if the council feels inclined, you know, to take the help and let's get this done. If not, then we're looking at another year where we're told, oh, we need this, we need that. There's no place to put this or that. It's, it's been a constant complaint for years.
No, but don't say that, because a lot of things haven't been done around here for a long time, and you tackle only recently one of them, and it includes where we shuffle the boxes downstairs. We've gotten rid of a lot of stuff in the last five, six months. There was a whole section down there that was spent IT, you know, just nasty stuff. We got rid of all of that stuff. It's all gone. So we're paying attention to what we need to pay attention to. It's just, I really hope you guys focused on capital improvement budgets and issues like that, and worrying about where I put the boxes downstairs.
Well, I know, I know, we saw that too, but when it was told that we're gonna need to maintain a building that just...
That is about it.
I think...
All right, Joe, was there something you wanted to say? No, I thought I interrupted you before. Okay.
I said, under comments, just to ask Matt, I think we needed another resolution for any sale of the industrial park. A percentage of it would go to, specifically for infrastructure. And I needed to know what the timeframe is for town council resolutions.
We have a while, Doc.
I thought we had discussed that first resolution next year, for next year or this year, no?
No.
I think we have a little bit before resolutions. Nancy, you said it the other day.
It won't affect the budget. Right. So we still have a couple weeks.
Because it really doesn't say when, when the charter stipulates under there that you have to have your final budget expense and revenue. It doesn't mention resolutions.
But it has to be for the public hearing, so we can introduce it at the public hearing.
But you do have to have public hearings on those, because...
Just approve or no?
No, the public hearing, the public hearing would be the referendum public hearing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we don't lose sight of that particular resolution. Thank you.
The other one was, we talked briefly on Tuesday night about putting on that sort of generic municipal buildings, sale of municipal buildings from years ago, that just in case we needed it for some reason. I don't foresee that we will, but it's a nice thing to have on there.
So we'll need those two for our next town council meeting, because that'll give us time. That'll be, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Town solicitor items and announcements?
Nothing. Town clerk? I'll go back, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that the Saturday is the parade in Newport for the St. Patrick's Day celebration, and we have a council meeting on that day, so you won't see any of us waving to you. But I do encourage anybody else that's from the town of Tibbetan that was invited to. I know the fire department usually participates. I'm not sure. Sally, you've done it a couple times.
You know, I just give rights home.
You just give rights home.
You have to go to drive for the parade.
I think last year, we had police and fire present, so it, you know, it would be nice to at least have some Tibbetan presence there.
Is that a, is that a volunteer effort, if they go marching on parade? Police and fire?
Who?
Police and fire?
I have no idea.
Yeah, we don't pay them to, to march in the parade.
Watch our budget.
I don't know.
All right, um, anybody else? I'm sorry, any other town council announcements? Okay. What's the matter?
Reacting to the chief's reaction.
Oh, I saw it.
This guy thinks it's paid by, you know, one of the community willing would be. So , Councilman, so as well advised, ask the question.
Town clerk items and announcements, Nancy.
Yes, I'm breaking that ahead of the agenda, but one of my items is a resolution. Council Chabot brought it to my attention that we have not had the change from the November election on the charter amendment, changing the date of the FTR from the third Tuesday to the third Saturday. So I spoke with Representative Edwards, and this is a similar resolution to what we have used in the past, and I need this approved so I can get it to him.
The resolution is in the back of the agenda, I'm sorry. I didn't entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make a motion to approve.
And send it to state representatives.
Second.
Motion's been made second. All those in favor?
We do have two other items. Tomorrow night, the police chief is here. There'll be a reception for promotions of different officers tomorrow night at 7 o'clock here at the council. Denise will be doing the oaths, I presume. I'm gonna set them all up. They're gonna be, we know their oaths to the position that they hold now for the council, and there'll be a little reception here. Chief, do you have anything?
It's gonna last, I, I won't be here, but so you'll get the oath, well, I'll...
We'll be right away to question.
I was just gonna ask.
You use a crystal ball. I can even be a lady. No, it's, actually, some of this, the swearing is actually gonna involve promotions as well as not, the new oath of office for these people.
Seven, seven thirty.
Seven PM.
Yeah, very town hall.
And there'll be light refreshments.
Seven or seven thirty?
Seven o'clock.
And then, just to remind you that I'll be hosting the two meetings, one for Saturday. The first interview is scheduled for nine o'clock, so you wanna make sure you're here before then. And there...
What time's on it, Nancy? Nine?
9:00 AM on Saturday. The first interview is scheduled, so we've set the meeting, I set it at nine, but it'd be good to be prepared before they come in.
When is our last interview on Saturday? What time is it? I just...
I can't remember, but I think it's 11:45 as the last one begins. And then, on Monday, they begin at seven o'clock, and the last one is at nine o'clock. So if you want to start earlier, I'll post the time earlier. You want 8:30? Is that what you said? Yeah.
Wait, what?
We have a hundred and thirty.
Yes, they just set it right. It's not posted, so I can change the time. It's fine. Eight thirty for Saturday. And how about Monday? Do you still want it to begin at seven?
Some of us can't make it.
There are three on Monday scheduled, each one an hour.
What time is the first one?
Seven.
Seven.
So six thirty.
I don't know, six forty-five.
Six forty-five. Six forty-five.
Are those open to the public?
That's Monday.
Yes, it's all unopened, and you have your packets.
Now, we did keep Wednesday ten to, Dave just reminded me, Wednesday, we're not gonna have any.
Well, I can post a meeting for Wednesday if you like.
Well, maybe we should have that meeting for Wednesday.
Oh, I can't. Oh, yes, I can, yes. Yes, I can. I can post the meeting for Wednesday, but we had a ten, we had put Wednesday, if in fact, I couldn't schedule all of them between Saturday, Monday, and then we said Wednesday.
We can make our decisions by Wednesday.
Make our decision Wednesday, and maybe move this quicker.
Let me just see what Wednesday, no, it's next Wednesday. It's next Wednesday. I've got historical advisory board and street committee here. I'm talking, let's say, the eighteenth.
Talking eighteen.
Now, this is, you have conservation?
Why wouldn't you say the eighteenth?
No, I have historical preservation and street. Like, we could meet at the library, or they could meet in, at this, this way, not next week. What, are we just, um...
Streets. That's the conflict, the streets.
The streets is here.
I have street advisory here on the eighteenth. Maybe we could meet at the senior center.
That's fine.
I'm not sure if it's...
Maybe we could have the attorneys who are interviewing tell us what they would do after listening to the street committee to agree.
All right, um, we're gonna move on.
And would that meeting be at seven? Because we have Portswatch at the senior center.
Yes, yes, that'll be at seven, because there's not really...
But we can use the other room.
Do we have a Wednesday meeting?
At seven.
Wednesday at seven and tomorrow at seven. Or deception.
Reception, yeah.
Okay, and also reception.
What's the matter?
Could I just sneak in on the town clerk, please? Resolution, the judge's...
I'm with him here.
For the 40% reimbursement.
Okay, Mr. Lambert, bring us into executive session, and I want it to be noted, it's quad of ten.
Yes.
For all of us.
Pursuant to what I am generally laws, I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to what I am generally laws, Section 4246585, disposition of real property, industrial park proposition.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Section 4246582, late collective bargaining, IBPO and IAFF.
Second. All those in favor? We're now in executive session.